Hello, everyone. Welcome. Thank you so much for your patience. And thank you so much for sharing this hour with us to hear from the District Two candidates. We're so glad to have you here. We're just gonna jump right in. We have one hour. And we are meeting the District Two candidates. And as a reminder, in the new city government, there will be three representatives from each of the four districts. And joining us today are Dan Ryan, Tiffany Penson, Marnie Glickman, Nat West, and Michelle DePass. My name, I'll be the moderator, the emcee today. My name is Dr. Ami Riley. I'm faculty at Portland State University and an advocacy committee member with Impact Northwest. The session is hosted today by a number of Portland-area nonprofits doing incredible work around housing and homelessness here in our greater community. And a special thank you to Portland Tenants United, Glen Shea House, SEI, the Northwest Pilot Project, Path Home Transition Projects, Our Just Future, Impact Northwest, the William Temple House, and the Welcome Home Coalition. So many people doing such meaningful work together in collaborative spaces for this really important issue. It's really important to note, as we talk to candidates today, that as 501(c)(3)'s, we are not endorsing any candidate, but we really know how important civic engagement is and advocating for our communities is. And so that's why we're bringing you all here together today. On behalf of Impact Northwest, Impact Northwest has a two-pronged advocacy approach. My colleague will add a link in the chat about Impact Northwest's homelessness prevention strategy. And together with our partners today, we want to stress the importance of housing plus services as a solution to addressing the crisis that we face in our communities. And contract modernization is also an important element that will revamp the way that the public sector can contract with all these nonprofits coming together to do this important work to provide housing services. So with that, let's set the scene and a couple of ground rules before we get started. Ada, if you want to pop up those slides. So let's see. The ground rules today are that all participants will be treated with respect and will treat others with respect. Everyone's microphones are off, but we will have a 20-minute Q and A session at the end. If you want to participate, just raise your real hand or your virtual hand and we'll unmute you or drop stuff in the chat. And the session will be recorded for those of us who couldn't be here in person today. Alrighty. The candidates will each have five minutes to speak. So candidate friends, we will give you a one-minute warning in chat. And I'll also give you some maybe like little jazz hands in the screen if that helps you know you have about one minute left. And then we'll make sure that there's time for questions at the end. And for question responses, it would be great if you could keep yourself to about a minute so we can make sure that we hear from all whichever candidates are inspired to respond to the questions. And with that, I think we'll get started. Let's begin with current Commissioner Dan Ryan. Take it away.
Thank you, Impact Northwest. Can you hear me? Okay, good.
You sound great.
I had a lot of tough technical difficulties. Did you say five minutes? I couldn't hear.
Yeah, exactly. Five minutes.
That's unusual. I will try not to use that. My name is Dan Ryan and I jumped into this race actually back in 2020. And it was after Commissioner Nick Fish passed away and a lot of people volunteered me. And I said, "All right, I'll do this. Why not?" And what motivated me was actually the what I experienced from my brother being homeless on the streets in Portland from 2010 to 2014. And what I noticed when I was out trying to do everything I could to get my brother to basically get sober and stop living day to day in the malady of on the streets and using at that point the drug of choice on the streets was oftentimes it was heroin for those that were using, is that I would ask them, "Why not go to a shelter? Why not utilize some of the services?" So I became familiar with the term "service resistant." And after he passed away in 2014, it impacted me and I started really paying attention to the homeless system that we were building in the county. And I found that it wasn't, I was concerned that it wasn't being responsive to the growing population that really needed services on the ground and how many people were uncomfortable with saying yes to services. How many people are even uncomfortable going into a unit of housing that didn't have services, that isolated them further? Anyone that's familiar with addictions, which I am, really it's about going from isolation to connection. So when I had the opportunity to then get elected in 2020 of September, the mayor instantly gave me the dotted line. It's a key word, dotted line from the city to the county. I instantly learned that the county was really responsible. It's not a joint office. The county runs the homeless services and the city donates money to it. And I thought that I had more influence and leverage than I did. And some of the early meetings, it was fascinating to hear after the voters were smart enough to pass the Here Together measure in the primary in the spring, we started meeting around what to do with that money. And I'll never forget, one of the first meetings I asked about, "Why aren't we talking about shelters with services?" I think the voters said yes to this because they wanted people living in this humanitarian crisis off the streets. And I was told by some important people that it really was a housing-first strategy and that we really need to stay focused on keeping people housed and housing. No one disagrees with that. I just thought it was increasingly becoming tone deaf to what was happening at that time, which is an escalation of drug use on the streets that were cheaper and even more accessible than the heroin from the decade prior. So it was quite a challenge then to feel seen and heard about this statement. Then the ARPA money came and the city had an opportunity to work outside the county, if you will, to do something. And so that's what I did. I got the city council around all five offices. We coordinated, we collaborated, and we got to a yes on doing the Safe Rest Villages. The chair at the time, Kefory, did endorse it. And then it began. It was a long road. There was a lot of opposition internally at the joint office because it was in some people's minds deviating from housing first. And I didn't really understand that. I just kept plugging away. But the headwinds were very severe internally. Externally, it's given that they're our headwinds. No one could understand why we would take what their vision of an unsanctioned camp, because that's what they had in their minds. They had the Water Avenue camps. They had the Northwest Portland camp in their brains. And they thought we were bringing that to them. Eighteen months later, we have seven villages built, one more than promised. We now have results. I ensured that we were going to have data. I also was the person that brought the data-driven work from Built to Zero. And we did sign that contract. I've been waiting for the county to actually implement it, not very patiently. I've added amendments each year to the joint office agreement that we would finally have more accountability and we would start working with the providers to help them. And getting data is not about, "Oh, there's only one minute to go." The point is, I have done something and it's getting results. Forty-five percent higher rate of success from the villages than we had from traditional shelters. I told myself when I ran, "I would do something for the people who are actually homeless." And sometimes I butted against some of all of you in the industry. And that's okay, because I'm always going to be representing the people on the streets. I want them to move from dependence on government to independence. Workforce is a key issue. I know we'll talk about that because right now we have a big portion of our population that's literally losing their minds. And it's a very eerie chemical warfare coming from China to Mexico to here. That's the truth. Talk to the federal delegation. We gotta wake up, get out of denial, and start being urgent on both sides of the river. I'm going to keep fighting for this and that's why I'm running for reelection.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Alrighty. Our next candidate is Tiffany Penson. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Hi, how are you? Thank you. Thank you for having me here. And the question is, why are we running for city council? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, and specifically like, what about housing and homelessness as in senior plans?
Okay. So again, thank you for having me. My name is Tiffany Penson. I'm born, raised, and rooted in northeast Portland. I still live in my family home in the Concordia area. And my father had a barber shop on Union Avenue, which is now Martin Luther King, where our community came and gathered, waiting for the perfect haircut. My mother, she worked her way up Pacific Northwest Bell, retiring early and starting a career as a Realtor, which she now does and she still enjoys. When I think about my upbringing, it was all about community. And I think about, because we had people struggling with houselessness and drug addiction and everything back then. But what I see with the difference was, is now, back then, people wrapped their arms around them, right? You could always, if they had a family member or something like that, you didn't see all of this sleeping out on the streets because it's like community wrapped their arms around them. I remember many a day as a child being in the barber shop and we had a guy named Bull Halsey that was kind of homeless in the community, but he always came. My dad made sure he had a haircut, had money in his pocket, had food, had whatever, no questions asked. And so that's what I see as a kid, being a kid back then. And then what we have now, we took care of our people. And so when I think about our role as government, our role as leaders, our role just from a humanities standpoint, you have to take care of your people. A city is only as vibrant and thriving as their people. And right now, we are not seeing that. And when I think about Impact Northwest and some of the other organizations that you have listed, I created a program at the city called We Are Better Together, where I do sponsorships and supports. That's how I know you organizations. And those things are really important to be able to wrap around services for people in need. So I've created a policy in that space. I've also created a policy around how do we, just in addition, how do we make sure our minority in women and veteran-owned small businesses have opportunities? All of these things and providing opportunities are key to the thriving of our city. I'm also elected to the Portland Community College School Board, which we have a huge focus on access to education and workforce and how I envision the role of PCC moving forward. When we take care of these folks, our hope is that most of them move into housing. Most of them are able to access education and careers. And I think PCC will play a huge role in that, is giving people opportunity. Because once you help people, you address their crisis, their challenges, whether addiction, mental health, or this, that, and the other, you have to give them an opportunity to thrive in the community or it just doesn't work. And so I think of, I'm looking forward and I'm always hopeful that we will get through this. Will we save everybody? No. But can we save a whole bunch? Yes. And so what does that look like to save them and then welcome them back into our community, taking care of them, providing access to them so they can thrive in our community? My career spans on helping folks. So I'm also the board chair of Cairo's PDX, which is a school preschool through fifth grade. And so we have a lot of parents and grandparents and stuff that deal with those other struggles and they actually have custody of the kids. So I understand the importance of taking care of our folks. And we have to do a better job of that. And it is private nonprofit and government partnerships that's going to get this done. So this is, I'm going to wrap up here and thank you.
Thank you so much, Tiffany. Thanks. Okay, and next up, we have Marnie. Marnie Glickman, take it away.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me. I'm going to tell you a little bit about why I'm running myself and how I'm going to approach my service on the city council because I'm new to some of you. I first moved to Portland in 1992 and I fell in love with it and adopted it as my home. And rent was cheap back then. I had a room for 425 bucks a month. And Portland was a spirited place for democracy and having a vibrant city. And I decided to run this time because I refuse to believe this is the best we can do in our city. I want a chance to make life better for all of us. In 10 years from now, are we going to look back and say, "Wow, we've come a long way from those difficult times"? Portlanders work really hard and I want the city to work hard for Portlanders. And so I have some experience, which I can bring to the table, which I think is unique in this big field. And I'll tell you a little bit about it and then talk about my policy priorities. I'm a mom. I raised three children successfully through the pandemic. I'm a black belt martial arts instructor. I am a graduate of Lewis and Clark Law School. And when I temporarily lived in the Bay Area, I served on a school board for four years. So like Tiffany and Michelle, I have experience dealing with how important education is. And, oh, Dan, are you waving your hand? Were you on a school board? Okay, Dan Ryan too. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm seeing all of you. So I served on a school board like many of us and having governing skills, I think, is really important as we reboot our city government. And so I have worked for many elected officials, like Oregon Congresswoman Elizabeth Furzen, Darlene Houli as well. And I bring that up because my roots in Portland are long and important to me. So I have a priority that we need to listen to experts like you, unhoused people, and other service providers. I do not come to this discussion pretending like I know everything or that I can get everything done based on my own knowledge. So I want to say that first and foremost. Secondly, I believe that we need to continue participating in the Joint Office on Homeless Services. That's important to me. I don't think that a divorce at this point is good for anyone. I really appreciate Commissioner Ryan's work and the sitting commissioners on Safe Rest Villages. I believe we need to have more. We need to have more nighttime shelters. I know Keith Wilson is talking a lot about that. And we also need to continue Portland's housing strategy. Another thing that's important to me is that we need to continue to work harder on addressing racial disparities when it comes to housing and houselessness. I am grateful to have the endorsement of Home PAC, Portland Neighbors Welcome, and other folks who care about affordable housing. I've been on the streets with people like Street Books, Street Roots, Ground Score. And I will continue to try and listen to people who are like you, who know best in this area. And I am not someone to use all my five minutes, so I'll wrap it up there.
Marnie, thanks so much and thanks for being here. Okay, up next, Nat West.
Hello. My name is Nat West and I've never served on a school board. I guess it makes me in the minority, maybe, in this awesome group. Some of you may know me as Reverend Nat of Reverend Nat's Hard Cider. That's one of my major stories in Portland. I started that business 12 years ago in my house and over the course of 13 years ago, excuse me, and over the course of 12 years, spanned it to be the largest hard cider manufacturer in Oregon, in Portland, excuse me, with sales in 13 states and overseas as well. A little-known fact, I was also a TriMet bus driver. I closed that business, the cider business, last fall. And I was a bus driver for about eight months and I'll come back to that in a minute. During my time at Reverend Nat's, I made a lot of donations over that period of time. Remember, the first donation that I made was two bottles, five weeks after starting the business. And at that point, two bottles was a lot. Over the course of the business, I donated over $280,000 worth of cider to grassroots organizations and community groups and found myself touching up against a lot of community organizations and advocacy groups like yourselves, but without really engaging with them because I was just so busy running a small business. So I'm definitely bringing my background as a small business owner, but also the lessons that I learned about the challenges of doing business in the city of Portland and how that affects so many other things, the challenges of getting building permits, the challenges of building housing, the challenges. I mean, even Dan faced challenges opening Safe Rest Villages that could have been smoothed over if we had a city that ran better. So that's my major focus in running is that. The bus was absolutely wonderful. Over the course of about eight months, I drove 29 different routes all across the city of Portland. And the last route that I did was Line Four, one of my favorite routes. Anybody Line Four riders in the group? Goes through, from St. John's through North Portland and down Rose Quarter and downtown. Obviously, being a bus driver, you see a lot and you help a lot. What I really liked about, I liked driving, don't get me wrong, it was fun driving a 40-foot bus through, 60-foot bus sometimes, through tight city streets. That was actually kind of fun. But what was really, really kept me going was knowing that I was opening the door and somebody expected me to arrive on time and they expected a smooth ride and they expected to get to their destination. Well, they probably expected to get there a little bit later than they hoped to get there, just to be honest. But I loved fading into the background, into people's lives, to dozens of my riders who I'll remember for a very long time. I was just another driver in a blue shirt. And that was really special to me and that real, that love of service, I'll bring that love of service to my time on city council as a focus on basic city services. So things like transportation safety is really, really important to me. I'm a lifelong daily bicycle commuter. That combined with my time as a bus driver really gives me a unique perspective into the challenges facing us on our city streets, making sure that it's safe to walk, to ride a bike, and also safe to drive. You know, my wife is a car driver all the time. So I want to make sure that it's safe for all road users, not some road users. I absolutely support Shelter First policy. Housing First kind of implies permanent housing. And I've seen a lot of folks whose first step, whose next step, is not into permanent housing. They need more steps along the way in conjunction with support services, as we've been talking about here. So making sure that we have those support services at the right level, available to anyone regardless of what kind of shelter that they're moving into will be a priority for me. I support designated camping sites. I love the Safe Rest Villages that Dan worked so hard on. I think there's plenty more opportunity for them. I also like larger, more congregate facilities. I fondly remember driving Route 11 for a week past Bybee Facility and seeing all those folks who, you know, most of them had jobs and they were still able to use housing services. And so it's really critical to have a lot, many different kinds of housing to meet the demands of, the needs of everyone. There are also some like small tweaks to some of the housing. For instance, if you have a dog or you live with a partner, it can be extra challenging to try to find housing in those situations, especially knowing that housing might not always be permanent and you're not willing to necessarily give up your beloved pet to participate in some sort of housing that might not last. So I'm really interested in making sure that we have many, many different kinds of housing. I also think that sweeps are a real waste of time unless you can have places for people to go. A friend of mine is the Assistant Director at Washington County Homeless Services and she paints a really clear picture about the success that they had out there about creating shelters first and then being able to move folks into them. So.
Thank you, Nat.
Oh, I'm sorry, the one minute was too long.
Yeah, yeah, no worries. But thank you so much. Thanks for sharing in such detail. And Michelle DePass, our final candidate. Thank you so much for being here. We're really looking forward to what you have to share.
Thank you. It's been great hearing from the other candidates and thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself today. So I know some of you on the call, but for those that I don't know, my name is Michelle DePass. I'm a longtime public servant, born and raised Portlander and currently serve as the Vice Chair of Portland School Board, like apparently like lots of other people on the call. I'm also the former Chair of the School Board in 2021 when we were putting kids back into buildings. It was a very challenging time to be on the board. I've worked for the city off and on for about 20 years. I've worked in parks, housing, and currently for the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. I studied community development at Portland State and sustainable business at the Bainbridge Graduate Institute. And in fact, while I was at Portland State as an adult learner who matriculated through PCC and then onto PSU, I took a class with Gretchen Kefory titled Poverty and Homelessness. And she brought in service providers to talk to us about the situation. And also, as a two-term class, we had an opportunity to work in shelters, night shelters. And so I had a little tiny bit of experience actually on the boots-on-the-ground with the shelter system. Actually, my kids showed up and cooked with me a couple of times. I was born and raised here in Portland, although I have lived in other cities and gone to school in Venezuela, in Mexico, Los Angeles, and Washington DC. So I have a love for cities and especially this one. I went to school and had my first job here and I raised my kids here as a single parent. And Portland, I'm motivated to run because I want to put Portland back on the map. I want to be the first city on the West Coast to solve its homeless, excuse me, to solve the homelessness situation. I was motivated recently by a Nicholas Kristof article that was in the New York Times this summer that asked, "What have we liberals done to the West Coast?" And it references, it talks about Portland and it also talks about Florida and Texas, who do a better job of housing their residents. And so I'm motivated to step into the role of a city councillor to help solve not only, you know, our largest issue, which is the addiction and homelessness crisis, but some of the other livability issues. I believe Marnie mentioned the racial disparities in homeownership rates and in homelessness. The data's out there and people of color still are unhoused at greater numbers than you would imagine as a share of the population. So we're a city of smart people. We can do this, I believe, in the joint office also. The joint office was actually in the Housing Bureau when I started there, before it was separated out. I know that we can do this. I know that we, I know what Portlanders value. We value our green spaces. We value, we have compassion for our neighbors. We value a sense of connection and that's for everyone that lives here, not just for those of us that have ruse over our heads. And I want to share a little bit about my professional background. Just the alleviation of poverty has been top of mind for me for the last 20 years because of my own personal background and just personal interest and academic interest. So I'd like to bring an age-friendly framework to Portland and that's where we consider how the city is considered from the perspective of a four-year-old and an 84-year-old. I believe if we operate at both ends of that age spectrum that we can claim everyone in the middle and rise all boats. Before I came back to the city in 2015, managed a low-income energy program in Iowa, Michigan, California, and Arizona that worked with all of the Head Start's throughout those states to, I worked with all of the Head Start's throughout those states to deliver energy efficiency for people that were not earning very much money. They were Head Start parents. And then I'm very concerned with the people that we don't see that are struggling with housing and that's the ALIS population. That would be asset-limited, income-constrained, and employed. Some of these people are living in their cars or doubled up and I want to pay attention to those folks too. Some of these people are living in their cars or doubled up and I wanted to pay attention to those folks too. In terms of housing policy, I would love to see the rental assistance program expanded to serve more families so we can actually prevent people from being on the street. And I'd like to beef up the first-time homeowner program as well. I would like to spend more money per down payment. Currently it's around 100,000. It's very hard to get people that qualify for that down payment assistance because you have to be poor enough to get the subsidy and well-off enough to be able to pay a mortgage. So it's a very slim population slice that can actually take advantage of that. But putting people in houses, first-time home buyers stabilizes neighborhoods and that's good for the whole city. Thank you.
Yeah, perfect, perfect timing. Thank you so much. Thanks for sharing. Thanks, everyone, for everything you've shared and your diversity and range of experience and plans and platforms. What we're going to do next is open up for some questions and answers from our candidates. Let's just see how this goes. I think the best way is if people want to raise hands, even if you're, you know, if we can get a little bit of a queue going, that would be great. Also feel free to drop a question in the chat. And let me just say you could ask an open question or you could ask a question that is targeted to a particular candidate. So who'd like to be brave and go first? Andy Nelson from Impact Northwest. Go ahead.
Hey, everybody. Yeah, I'm happy to, I'll be the first person to ask a question, but I hope a few other people will too. Yeah, and thanks so much, all the candidates and all the guests for joining us today. Really excited to just have some good democracy and discussion of issues. I appreciate everybody just talking freely about where they stand. We're all trying to figure this out. Little bit of a different topic. A lot of the organizations that sponsored today, Northwest Pilot Project, Path Home, Transition Projects, Impact Northwest, we partner with the public sector to deliver a social safety net. I'm just, I'm happy to live in a community where we have one. It's not the case everywhere. But it's somewhat, as you all know, somewhat fractured. What isn't as well-known is what part of the reason for that is because as happy as we are to partner with the public sector like the city of Portland, often those contracts really don't provide the needed resources. And that's particularly true for our ability to compensate frontline workers, the people who are in shelters, doing street outreach, working with the 484-year-old, as you mentioned, Michelle. Want to highlight that issue and get a sense of what, how you think about that and how you want to approach that if elected?
Should I, are we, I don't know where the hand raise is ever. So.
Go for it, Tiffany.
All right. So again, Tiffany Petson, and you, you bring up a point and not just with your organization, but just we have other organizations as well that provide business technical assistance and all of these things. And I'm on the forefront of creating policy around those. And you are right, one of the things about the funding, it's, it usually lacks the inclusiveness of the pieces of the, the staff and the support system that you really need to even implement the, the programs and the, and the funding. So it's a, it is an issue. And so when we think about our funding and how we are supporting these organizations, we have to start encompassing what do they need infrastructurally? Like is it positions? This is administrative? Is it, what do they need to be able to take this funding and fully implement it? Also, when I think about, and I just had to call you guys a while ago, I think I was working with Ada. Everything is good intentions, right? But intent and impact sometimes are not aligned. And so when we think about, how do we really assess in a good way what the need is? When you, when you, what I'm finding is when people call and they need this help, if these organizations have been giving money, it could be like 30 days ago and they're out already. And so I think we, we need to do a better assessment of what the need is so we can properly fund, properly resource. You got to put resources with that funding in order to help these nonprofits get it out the door. Because you guys are running, it's tight ships. So that is a problem. A lot of our nonprofits have talked about that and that's something that I'll take on because I work in that space and getting funding to the nonprofits. So it is noted.
Thanks, Tiffany. Yeah. One other, yeah, Marnie, do you want to respond to this and then we'll move to the next question?
Sure. I appreciate that question. I'm, I'm a leader who supports working families and working wages. And so I know that in order to have services provided, we need people who are paid a living wage. And so for me, that's at least $27 an hour. And I would like to do my best as one of 12 city council members to make sure that we also in our contracts, provide the ability to provide full benefits for people who provide services.
Thanks, Marnie. Dan and Michelle, did you also want to respond to this question?
I did. I wanted to talk about the workforce development piece and the work, the, the paid workforce. I just attended a conference on the invitation of Governor Brown last week focused on early childhood policy. However, the, the workforce issue came up and it's a really big barrier to, we, we've got people providing services in Portland and services in that early learning space that are in fact themselves eligible for food stamps and other assistance. And so I'm a big advocate of union jobs because they pay well. And we, as the city, could do better in terms of supporting that livable wage, which I believe is around $27 an hour. So we don't create this cycle of our workforce having to get services that we're still funding. Doesn't make sense.
Yeah, thanks for letting me jump in. Yes, to living wage contracts and workforce housing is also a part of that. So we have to do both the Housing Bureau focus more on workforce housing and then the county's contracts to you all need to make sure that they have a living wage. And I'll add one more thing. The county and the city leaders need to get on the same page about what success looks like. You're operating without a real strategic action plan. So I need to know how your provider is actually going to make the world better in one year's time. And we need measurements on that. Find your place on the map, what your role is and tell me what you're going to measure. I will always find money for practices that are delivering. So the Safe Fresh Villages are delivering. We need to now fund them. I knew I had to get proof points for all of you since no one really wanted them in the ecosystem, but now you can't run away from it because it's getting results. So chasing money is fine if it's chasing practices that are delivering.
Thanks, Dan. And that's sort of a setup to the next question I'll read from chat from Brenda, which says, do you feel the homelessness response action plan, the new HRAP, is a plan that can work? Would like to respond to that.
Could you spell out that for now?
Oh, yeah. And as you can see it in the chat, homelessness response action plan, sometimes known as HRAP. And that, and then Tiffany, did I see your hand?
I'll let him go first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Tiffany. Yeah, so it's a brand new plan. I guess it was just this summer approved. I like the fact that it has metrics and goals built into it from the outset. And I, I believe that's been lacking in joint office. No criticism to the folks who set up the joint office in the very beginning because they didn't understand the magnitude of the problem because we, none of us did. It was just a money exchange thing in the beginning. And now I think there's a lot of feedback from the community that we should be tying our funding to specific metrics. We, I shouldn't get a newsletter from joint office about how proud they are that they signed an intergovernmental agreement. I should be getting a newsletter about the folks who are getting off the street. So I, I like how we're, maybe it's, I won't say too little too late because it's never too little too late. But this is kind of what I think should have been set up with the joint office from the very beginning. So I'm excited that it, that it'll, that it, that we have it. Whether it will work depends on how we implement it, which these folks have already talked about. Implementation really matters.
Thanks, Matt. And Tiffany, did you want to add something?
Just to a broad thing. The real issue around is accountability for these things. And right, how do we measure things? How do we know if things are working? And I, and I, and I think what I see with our taxpayers, they're very generous, right? They'll support things, but where they are now is they're frustrated because they don't see how their money, how, how these things are being put to use to solve the issue. So any plan that is going to include metrics and accountability, those are the plans that we need. And we need to collaborate and work together and try them. And when they are not working, we need to know how to quickly pivot because we're in an acute crisis. We don't need any more reports. We already know what needs to happen here. So we need to just be diligent and working together to execute. And if they're not working, we need to have the ability to quickly pivot and go to something that may work.
Thanks, Tiffany.
I like a lot of what I've heard from the people that I might, that I hope to serve with. And I think what's missing is it's not just the accountability. It's about having differentiated strategies for different types of people that are homeless. Of course, you all know better than I do that there's, you talk to 100 people who are houseless and you're going to get 100 compelling stories. However, what I've always found frustrating is that we didn't have targeted strategies for those who have been chronically homeless and suffer from addiction to mental health, which differentiates from my mother, who was too stubborn to tell us she was rent burdened until we had to do an intervention. And so we worked with her and the next thing you know, we got her to put a little like, I'm, I would like to do a house share at her church in San Diego. This was 10 years ago. And next thing you know, she's living in a wonderful home, spending one-tenth the amount that she was in a crappy apartment. And so that's a differentiation strategies because we need our elders just to be housed in place. And that's our fastest growing vulnerable population for homelessness. And so I think that the joint office and the providers need to get more creative about those differentiated strategies. And every time I put accountable, accountability measures in the amendments that go over to the county, they reject them. And so I don't know what we're afraid of. And I'm a revenue person. I want the next one to pass. And if we don't start becoming more accountable to the taxpayers, they're not going to vote yes on this next time. And so we're in an urgent period of time. No one's hating on anyone. Everyone's rooting for us to do something. I'll end with the fact, even though I was getting the you-know-what kicked out of me all through town for about a year and a half, trying to build the Safe Fresh Villages, there was always a person that would come out of the Zoom and want to tell me, keep it up, keep fighting. This is exactly the right thing to do. And all the neighborhoods they're in now, the, the NIMBYs have gone away. In fact, people are saying the area looks better than it ever did before. Best example is Peninsula Crossing where that bike path that wasn't usable for 13 years is now used by children and families as an amenity once again. We can do this. We just got to have the chutzpah to go against the headwinds and get stuff done.
Thanks. Thanks, Tom. We have just about five or 10 more minutes left. So what I might do is ask one final question in the chat, which is what do you see when it comes to housing and the homelessness response that's going well? What's a, a policy or an action that, that you wouldn't change if you were elected? And I also just want to, because there's so many great questions in the chat, invite the candidates to check those out and just realize here are some of the important issues that these folks are really hoping you all are thinking about as you build your positions and plans. So with that, maybe we'll go backwards. So we'll, we'll start with Michelle and just love to hear like a final response to this question. What's something that, that, that we're doing right that you would like to continue or grow?
I think, yes, thank you, thank you for that. I think two things that are going well are the smaller, the tiny villages, the We Shine model. They're very, they're very small pods of maybe up to 10 or 12 tiny homes. I think that's going well. And also the home sharing here in Portland. I haven't checked in in about a year, but the home share allows people that are homeowners to partner up with people that need housing and, and share their homes. And there's guardrails put up. So it's a verifiable, you know, situation. You can get your back grand chest, et cetera. But I've heard a couple of case stories where that's been a really positive outcome, especially for, I mean, for both parties really, the person needing housing and the, you know, senior citizen that's living by themselves.
Thanks, Michelle. And Matt?
Yeah, Michelle nailed it. And so, you know, props to Dan, those small, the tiny, tiny rest villages are great. I love the small ones like Michelle, Michelle just mentioned, smallest ones. But I'll also say that I think the thing that's going the best right now is that so many candidates are running and they're including housing and homelessness as a major part of their platform. So if, if I get elected, if anyone here gets or doesn't get elected, we, we're going to have a very strong council that's going to be paying a, a, you know, first attention to these issues with fresh ideas, not just relying on stuff that may or, may have worked or not have worked in the past.
Thank you. And Marnie?
This is a hard question because I've seen so many things working on the streets. I have visited with Street Books. I have visited Rose Haven, their amazing programs. But the one that struck me most was my visit with Brown Score and the nonprofit providing well-paid entry-level, low-barrier jobs for unhoused people using their tricycles and making our city cleaner and recycling and really thinking about the whole system that we need to transform to make life better for all Portlanders.
Thanks, Marnie. And Tiffany?
So I think the small villages are going well, but also something that Bybee Lakes Hope Center, that's a great model. And it is, it houses folks and all the services come there to them so they don't need to. And there's partnerships with Columbia Sports where giving them wage-paying jobs, $23 and above. So I think expanding on those types of models are important as well. I think what's going well, but in a way that started out from a challenge, is that now we're all having the conversation that together. It's being forced to make sure that the city and county and all the government entities are having the conversation and having to work together to solve this. It's like, it's now, we have an unprecedented amount of money to solve this issue. And so we need to make sure that the infrastructure is set up and we need to solve for this issue.
Thank you, Tiffany. And Dan?
Yeah, I think actually the current conflicts that we're having on both sides of the river, and by the way, it's, it's conflicts within the county board and within the city, is actually healthy. It's called healthy tension. And Portland's been playing passive aggressive dice on this issue for 20 some years and it's not working. So success shouldn't be that we sign a joint offer, a joint agreement. Success should be that we have clear roles and responsibilities. We measure what success looks like and we keep being humble, check the egos at the door. No one's hitting it out of the park right now and how we can continue to work together. So I really like that that's happening. I think workforce, ground source is a great bright spot out there, getting people immediately. I know this from my lived experience hooked into busyness that structured like work is great. And I'll say the last thing is when I go to the villages, one of my favorite data points is how many people were just completely off the register? Their social security numbers, they weren't hooked into Medicaid. They were off the grid in ways that's pretty eerie. And so we've, we've had hundreds of people now be put back in the systems. They can start going to doctor's appointments. They're seen. That's such an important reason why services first is a better policy that leads in a pathway to stabilization that includes housing.
Thanks to each of you. Thanks to everyone who is here, your great questions and engagement. So nice to have you all here. I wish each of you luck in the coming election and in continuing to communicate and plan around housing and homelessness. And for everyone who missed us today, well, this session will be available via recording. Thanks for being here and I hope you all have a great rest of your day and week and election season. Take care.
Thank you so much for having us.
And thank you all and your staff for showing up on the, on the, on the ground. Thanks so much.
Bye.
Thank you.